All right. All right, good afternoon, everyone. We'll call this April 22nd, 4:00 PM work session of the ASD School Board to order. Present in the boardroom are members Lessons, Wilson, Jacobs, who's chairing today, Higgins, Donnelly, and then online we have members Holloman and Bellamy. And we've called ourselves to order. Our first item on our agenda today for work session is B1 Budget. Dr. Bryant and team, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So today's work session follows up on some key topics that are on our educators' minds, and that includes our budget development processes, timelines. I understand that there's a lot of questions around staffing. We'll be prepared to answer that. And then we'll also share some information on the record that we also shared with legislators this week on our fund balance. But with that said, today's work session's going to be very process-heavy. But before we start getting into all of that, I think it's very important that the community and everybody in this room understand that there's real people attached to these processes. And this is a devastating time to be an educator right now. And it doesn't help that just moments ago, the governor's veto was sustained by the legislature. So a lot of educators are feeling panic, and they need to hear that we have their backs, and we're going to do whatever it takes to help them. So before we get into the nitty-gritty of processes and that sort of thing, it's people-first here, and we're going to do whatever we can. And we'll talk through some of that today, but I had to say it off the top. So with that said, team, go ahead.
All right. So thank you. I'll go ahead and kick this off. Really, I want to spend this presentation on the budget side of it, really focusing on our fund balances, how we report and disclose those, the different categories of fund balances, and the impact of one-time funding and attrition that they have on that. We'll give a brief legislative update based on the fiscal impact of the governor's new proposed bill, and then I'll turn it over to Marty and his team to discuss, give you a little more information on the staffing. Right now, we're in the, here's our budget calendar again. It's really, we are in the legislative session, really just trying to wait to see what happens there. As Dr. Bryant mentioned, the veto of the funding was sustained, so they're going to have to go back to the drawing board and figure out something for education. So really, the first one is just trying to dispel some of the misconceptions that have been out there around ASD's fund balance and some other items that have, how it's been reported. The first misconception that we've had is that the district has $121 million in savings that could be used to prevent reductions of staff for next year. Reality, the majority of these funds have either been restricted for use or have already been dedicated. So of that 121 million, that's what we ended last year. I believe that's where the number came for in the report. 37 million is in our spending plan for this year, almost 50 million for next year, and then about 27 million is restricted for our bond rating reserve and is otherwise unspendable. So that leaves about, you know, a little under $8 million of actual spendable money to address any sort of... Sure. And we'll go through them a little more, go through them all in a little more detail and kind of where's those reports are at. But really, the $121 million that we ended last year with is largely spoken for at this point. And here's the report that I believe that the folks were looking at to get that 121 million. So this comes out of our financial statements. You can see the general fund, unreserved fund balance, 121.6 million here, are about 18.45% of our expenditures. We do have fund balances for other, in other areas such as encumbrances, inventory, prepaid, self-insurance, impact aid, and then student allotments, which are also restricted. This is, we are above the 10% limit that has been waived through the end of this year and should go back into effect next year unless there's other legislative changes surrounding that. To break that down a little bit further, the district also prepared a report that's also in our, in our financial reports that show a little more detail on how that's broken out. So of that 121.6 million, you can see here we have the 37 million that's already been dedicated, or at that time had been dedicated towards the current year's budget, the $26 million in bond rating, and then it shows $58 million in other, which is our unassigned fund balance. So of that 58 million, that's really where we're drawing the $50 million from for next year. But again, this report's ending June 30th of '24. We wouldn't know how much we were spending next year until we got close to the budget. So that's why we have, we don't, we show that as unassigned, but truly, that $58 million is going to be the vast majority of this plan to be spent for next year. There's also a crosswalk between the State of Alaska Charter of Accounts, or their reporting standard, and the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54 reporting. So we have, right now, we're in this area where we have to do two different reports, one based on the state standards and one based on the GASB standards that we have to do our financial reports for. And we do a crosswalk to there so you can see the different categorizations of fund balance. But I really don't want to get into a lot of that here because that's going to get really technical and probably an accounting lesson for another time. But we do provide that just because we have to do two different reporting standards. So...
A question from member Lessons.
Yeah, thank you. If you could just clarify, this is, you know, the end of FY '24. So the way that I've been thinking about it, this is as if we had taken, you know, a Polaroid or a snapshot at 11:59 PM on June 30th, 2024. I mean, is that a correct sort of, this is a moment in time depiction? I mean, it's now, we're now 10 months out from the end of FY '24.
Yeah, so that would be the amount of money that we had essentially at the end of FY '24. And that's kind of, this was actually done after the board had gone back and redone the adopted budget for '25. Because as you recall, and we did our preliminary budget, we had, I believe, like 70 million or so in fund balance dedicated to it. Now we have 37 because the state one-time money came in. So this does account for that kind of one-time money coming in and a little bit lower usage of fund balance, but we're still using it.
Okay, so it accounts for the money that we, the one-time funds that we received from the state?
They wouldn't necessarily be in there, but the amount of fund balance the board has chosen to use to support this year's budget that changed in August. We changed the financial statements for the prior year because of that, because it's considered a subsequent event, and we need to include it if it's within a certain amount of time after the close of the financial period.
Okay.
The next misconception would be that ASD did not spend any of the one-time funds for '24, '25. That would be the $49 million that was provided as a $680 BSA equivalent to the districts. In reality, we fully incorporated that 49 million into our budget in addition to the $37 million in fund balance that we're planning on spending.
Mr. Allen, I'm going to pause there and get a question from member Donnelly.
I just want to clarify the difference between the various proposals on the BSA. So last year, there was a $680 increase, which equaled 49 million for ASD, right?
Correct.
And our current gap is based on the things we, the board wants to restore is about $100 BSA, so that, I mean, a $1,000 BSA. So what's, that total is how much?
About, in total dollars?
Yes.
About 71 million.
So it's 71. And then the latest proposal I saw being put forward by the executive was 560, which would be how much?
Just under 40 million.
So that would still leave us with about 60 million to figure out where to cut. We'd have to, based, based on the amendment that passed when we did the budget saying if there's a $1,000 BSA increase, here's what we're going to do with it, we'd be short about 40 million still of those items.
About a $30 million difference between 1,000 and the 5, because it would go from 71 to 39.
I'm just trying to anticipate what we're going to be faced with in a month here if, if it doesn't, if, you know, if we end up with 560, right? So we'd be looking about, about 30 million, we'd have to go back and figure out what 30 million of that 71 million, we'd still have to cut.
Correct. I mean, yeah, or what you want to add back with that 40 million. I mean, that's really how we would look at it is administration would probably, just like in other instances, here's an administration proposal to add this money back. Does the board concur or want to change it?
Thank you.
One more question from member Higgins.
Yeah, I, I was in a community council meeting Eagle River area, and I was listening to one of the participants there, one of the members reading off stuff from a, from legislator, talking about how we got one-time funding last year, didn't use any of that money, that we had more than savings than what we even needed this year. And listening to all of these things that just kind of blew me away because I also sit on the finance committee, so I kind of know that part. And I responded to a lot of that, but I'm trying to figure out, how was this even made up or where did they come from to think that we haven't spent one penny of the money for the BSA increase last year, the one-time funding, and that we have such a massive amount of savings? And they're using that as a basis to say that ASD doesn't need anything? Kind of like the issue of admin, we don't need it because we got admin so big, even though we provided the information of how limited it is, and if we cut all admin, people won't get paid. It still didn't go across. But I'm wondering where the numbers came from. How could they have possibly come up with this assumption that none of the one-time funding was spent, none of it? And we had all this 100 and so many million dollars in savings that we could spend, but none, no BSA money was spent last year that was the one-time funding? Do you have any idea where that was made up, how it was even come about?
I've got a couple theories, yes. So, yeah, the two theories that I have are, one, in the state report that's due July 15th. We didn't know how much money we were going to have until like June 28th, that Friday before we left for July 4th break. The school board is out of session, so we did not have a budget to the state by July 15th that reflected the new money addition. I suspect most other districts didn't either. We were told to submit the budgets as, as they were without the money included. So the official report for Anchorage's budget as of July 15th did not include that $49 million in one-time funding. So if you're just looking at that, you probably wouldn't have seen it in there, although the board subsequently came back in August, allocated those funds, and put them in the adopted budget. The other theory I can think of, and this was talking to someone, I think there may be confusion because both the numbers of the one-time funding and the amount that we're using in our fund balance for next year is 49 million. It's the same amount, just coincidentally. So as you're looking at those two numbers, I think there's some confusion to say, oh, yeah, you're just holding that money over for next year, when in reality, you know, we had more than that to begin with. We're still spending 37 million this year, but it just, on coincidence, it happened to be the same number that we're carrying forward that we received in one-time money.
I just hope that we send something out to the legislature clarifying this and also inviting them that before they go out with something that's so inaccurate that they give us a chance to respond. They're damaging kids in information and schools, and they're doing it by providing information that is totally wrong. They're not trying to even verify it because they've got a goal. And it's just frustrating to watch this type of attack without any chance to correct it. If we can have a honest communication about funding, that's fine. And if they got areas to do, I can, I'll concede if they find areas of issues that I've got issues. But this thing of coming out with something without any communications, no back-and-forth information, totally wrong, they're going to base, even if they gave us $1,000 this year, they're going to say we didn't spend it because they're going to base it upon the, the budget we gave them in February or March. That's about what I'm hearing here now, is that because we had to submit a budget earlier, they're going to say that budget didn't change when we know it did. So I don't, it's just somehow getting the information out there to legislators who may not want to support and fund public education, fine, but at least do it honestly. And if they do that, they'll give us a chance to respond before they go out there and provide this false information to the public and use that to justify undermining public education. Thank you.
I believe Marco has her hand raised as well.
All right, member Bellamy, we'll get your question next.
I'm sorry, I don't even have a question. I just wanted to follow up with member Higgins, because I agree with him. If people would be honest and accept the facts, we wouldn't have this kind of misunderstanding. I believe it's intentional, and I believe it's directed at ASD in particular. And it's, it's terrible. I don't know, and I do want to thank the superintendent for sending out his letter yesterday very early to all the legislators. Many of us also followed up with the legislators. It apparently didn't do any good because they still voted to override if that was their only confusion. So even clearing up the misconceptions at this point in time does not work. But I, I agree. I mean, we've got to find some way to, for people to, hopefully, some way for people to at least ask the questions that they, that are important to them, and then accept the response for what it is, the truth. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, member Bellamy. All right. Now we have our questions answered, we can continue, Mr. Allen.
All right. Thank you. So the next slide I wanted to show is the general fund revenue summary that's in our adopted budget book. Just highlighting the two numbers I want to pay attention to are, one, the 37 million that we're spending in fund balance, in fund balance this year, and the 49 million operating grants. That's the one-time money outside the BSA. So this is incorporated in the budget that the school board approved and plans to spend for the current year. So that really has been included in our budget. I don't know any way around it. It's, it's there, it's all, it's accounted for. The last misconception I really wanted to address today is that in regards to our having 41 million in funds and overestimated salaries, or HR accounts as it's been kind of loosely described, that could be used to also prevent teacher reductions next year. ASD incorporates an estimate of unspent funds into its budget to try to prevent having a lot of excess funding at the end of the year. This basic concept is shown, we show this in the concept below. If you have a revenue coming in of $100, and you know every year that some amount of that money that you budget does not get spent, the way that we've handled this in current year and previous years to some extent has been, as we include this attrition number. So we'll say, hey, you guys can spend $105, but I'm going to take a risk, a kind of a calculated risk, that five of that $5 is going to go unspent. The inherent risk is that everyone spends all their money, and I'm five bucks short at the end of the year, which I really don't want to be in that position. So as we get kind of closer and we have more and more vacancies throughout, in turnover throughout the years, and that number gets higher and higher, how high do we chase that in trying to alleviate or put money back into the budget? And essentially take on more and more risk that you're going to be, eventually be overspent. So at 41 million, I think we're going to be pretty tight on it this year. Next year, it's given me some pause also. If we're really going to have to reduce a lot of positions, then we may not have as many turnover vacancies, and that 41 million's going to be harder to meet. But really, the basic, the most simple example is, you know, we tell people they can spend more than we actually anticipate getting in on the assumption that they're not going to spend it all. It's happened generally every year, and that number that they don't spend just keeps on growing. So we're trying to get closer than that so we don't have a lot of excess funding at the end of the year that doesn't go to meet our students' needs. So instead of $5, ASD is done, has 41 million out there, is that estimate that's going to be unspent.
Could, are you just...
Member Donnelly question.
So what fiscal year, or what school year is that applicable to?
Both this year and next, it's about 41 million.
Isn't it, if we end up reducing positions, this, this makes sense to me. We're not going to have the potential for as much carryover next, after the next school year, because we'll have fewer positions to assume vacancies from. So why are you projecting the same number next year as this year?
I mean, what we've seen in the past, because we've been cutting resources for years, is you kind of get this stasis, and then you start, the folks that are in there, once they figure out they have, you know, they have 35 or 40 kids in the class or having to take on so much extra work because we've cut so much other staff, I think we're going to see more turnover frankly, or more vacancies. And they're maybe sustained longer. I mean, it's really, we're just trying to do our best to project out and not have that money at the end of the year, but at the same time, you know, I think we, you could get into a position where you're a little bit overextended that. And that's why it's good to, good practice to have fund balance in there so you can absorb some of those if something comes up. Yeah, it's given me some pause right now, and...
Thank you, member Donnelly. Seeing no other questions, we can continue.
All right, so I did want to spend a little bit of time on our projections. This will be shown, and we'll go through this more, in a lot more detail at the finance committee. I just wanted to hit some high points and get it out in front of you guys because I'm also going to use this in some testimony to the Senate tomorrow in regards to how much money we expect to have at the end of the year, because that's one of the things that get, that they, that attrition misconception gets at, is you're going to have all this money left over because you've overestimated on your salaries, because you have all those vacancies and turnover. So just briefly highlight some of the things that we see in our fund balance projections, and we'll go through them in a lot more detail on Thursday. So our total revenue, we have a negative variance of about 37 million. That's because we planned on spending 37 million in fund balance. So our revenue is fairly well on target overall, but we do plan on spending that money that we said we're, or not receiving that money, we said we're going to receive through fund balance, because you don't record it as an actual revenue source. On the expenditure side, you, we have in our budget documentation and all of our projections, we, you see these attrition and the benefit attrition line items. It's a little over 40 million here. That's where you see that negative adjustment for having all those vacancies and turnover and folks waiving benefits. Overall, you know, between the salaries and benefits and these variances here, we're going to see about a little under $1 million in savings. Overall, on our budget, we'll see on our expense side about $8 million in positive variance for this year. So we are trending okay on that, but we are going to have to transfer some money out for transportation and I think some other things, and we'll get into that a little more on Thursday. But really, the point I want to drive home on this is, on our summary page, is our revenue is going to be under our expenditures by about 36 million. So we plan to spend 37 million, we're going to spend about 36 of it. So we're going to be in about where we said we would be. You know, I think some of the folks in the legislature, many times when we didn't budget as much in our attrition or have that offset as much, and we did have quite a bit of funds left over at the end of the year. That's not the case this year, and really doubt it'll be the case next year. Our projected ending undesigned or unreserved fund balances is going to be there again. You see the 27 million in the bond rating, the 49.8 million in fund balance that we're spending next year, and then that unassigned balance of about $7.5 million. So that's really our flexibility is with that $7.5 million, and it's just not there. We don't have the money sitting around to reinstate the staff that people, folks are saying that we have the money that's out there.
Member Donnelly question?
So the staffing, unfilled staffing positions that result in the potential carryover to fill the gap, there's, in instruction, there's two big types, right? There's teachers and, and teaching assistants. Have we, I guess my question is, as the year went on, did we continue to try to fill those gaps? Or did we see, or was our policy, because we were so far in the hole budget-wise, that we started, we gave up trying to fill those budgeted spots?
Member Donnelly, I can answer that. A lot of times, it's difficult to fill teaching positions mid-year because most of the available pool is under contract with other districts. When it comes to paraprofessionals, though, we continue to keep those positions posted, and our principals and supervisors continue to hire folks all year long as we get applicants for those individual postings. And so we tend to see, you know, some regular turnover in those hourly positions, but we regularly post and, and try to hire those as they're, as they're vacant.
Thank you.
And I would say that a lot of those positions that we have that are unfilled are within special education, the paraprofessionals and the teachers and... And I would say that a lot of those positions that we have that are unfilled are within special education, the, the paraprofessionals and the teachers in there. And those really weren't reduced very much. So I think we'll still have the vacancy rates on that side quite a bit more. It's that gen ed side that we may not have as much, but they didn't have a whole lot of vacancies to begin with, I don't think. Um, so I think we'll be okay, but it's going to get tie, a little tighter than it is this year.
All right. No other questions, Mr. Ralston.
All right. Um, finally kind of pointed upon a point on our FY 25, 26 budget book. Well, in the proposed book, we had, here's the 49.8 million in fund balance that we're planning on using for this year, just to show that it is incorporated in our budget documentation. We do plan on spending it for next year. Um, so that's really just kind of what we wanted to say about, uh, the misconceptions that have been going around about our fund balance and how much money we may have to put towards, uh, retaining staff for this year. Next, just kind of jump into what's in the, the governor's new education bill for financial.
Before we, before we go there, I just kind of want to put a pin in the, the fund balance because I've been, um, contemplating about this a lot for a couple of different reasons over the last week. And I just want to check my understanding, I guess, that part of the reason the fund balance issue is so complicated in part is because our budget cycle and the state budget cycle don't align, that we, um, have to pass a budget before the state funding is certain. Um, that leads to our having to guess in some instances, which is essentially what we did last year. The amount of a, a potential BSA increase and we guessed wrong. Um, and we were conservative in our guess, which I think given the, um, efficacy of the current legislature was wise. And I also think it's important to, to note that there were opportunities to provide, there are opportunities every year despite that misalignment to provide school districts like Anchorage some certainty. Um, the governor is required in December to produce an annual budget that could, um, indicate his support for an increase to the foundation formula. There's legislation that could be introduced, which could indicate support for a, a early increase to the foundation formula. And, and so we can use those indicators when they're put in place early. Um, those things just haven't happened. And so, um, I really just wanted to highlight that fund balance challenges and interpreting um, the complex way that districts have to carry over funds, given the uncertainty from the state is not of our own doing or choice. And so, um, assuming you have no objection with that, because it really didn't end in more of a question, we can continue on. Thanks.
All right. And I would say that our, our budget cycles do align. We're all on the fiscal year ending June 30. However, it's just the timing of when those budgets have to be approved that's different. Like ours has to be done by the first Monday in March. So we can do it, the assembly and get to the tax request, but um, the underlying issue is we don't find out how much money we have until we're the day before school starts or the next fiscal year starts. It makes it really difficult to have staffing in place and get those resources, uh, to, um, sent out to our schools. Uh, but within governor's new education bill, the financial pieces in that include a $560 BSA increase, uh, about 39.8 million, uh, moving correspondence funding from a point nine to a 1.0 would generate about 1.2 million for Anchorage. And then there was some K six reading proficiency improvement or improvement grants. You know, if the students are proficient or show improvement, there was a $450 per eligible student included in there. Estimate that at about three to six million, but we really need more clarity on really which students would qualify under that, how they're going to define improvement. Um, is there some sort of cut score that defines that and how many kids would fall under that? And then which testing year would, uh, tie to which funding year? So would it be the kids tested in this current year or funding next year essentially, or what that metric is? Um, so we just don't know what the timing on the, the distribution would be. Um, but that's really the financial components in there. There was some other things regarding the charter schools and open enrollment in that bill as well and, and cell phone usage. But this was the, as, as the finance piece.
Member Lessons question.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the quick glance at the new bill. Um, I, I too have been scratching my head with the, the reading sort of component of the bill. Um, this is the first estimate I've seen of what ASD thinks perhaps it could generate. Is there any language in the bill as it has been presented that, um, would direct how those dollars are spent? You know, if reading proficiency grants are generated and produce revenue of some sort for ASD, is there anything dictating where they need to go at that point forward? Or does that remain thus far in local control? Or we just, we just don't know.
Yeah. The way the bill was written, it seemed to just provide the funding for that, but it didn't really have any sort of specificity on what to be used for or how it would be distributed or when.
So in, in an extreme example, and I don't want to be blasé about this, we wouldn't be buying $6 million of pizza parties for kids who could already read. We could in fact direct $6 million towards kids who can't read.
That's not what I understand.
That, that's correct. That's how I'm interpreting it. I think that would be the most prudent way to use those dollars. And I'm looking at the bill right now to Mr. Ralston's point. It's, I think intentionally vague to allow that flexibility, but I would support using those dollars to help our students who are not proficient, get proficient.
Have a question online? All right. So I think we're okay to move forward.
Right. Uh, that's what I have for the budget. And with that, I'll turn it to Mr. Ling.
Thank you, Andy. Um, yeah, we wanted to take a moment to come and update you on where we're at with our internal staffing process. Um, given the scope and scale of the reductions in the FY 26 budget and its impact on our staff. Um, there has obviously been a lot of attention in kind of each phase of our internal staffing process that we go through in the spring. And so we just wanted to spend a little bit of time telling you where we are in that process and what some of the next steps look for. And like Dr. Bryant said at the top of the session today, as we talk about numbers and processes here, we do, we are cognizant, um, of the fact that there are real individuals being impacted by this. And this is the unfortunate reality of where we're at today. And this is a process I think all of us wish we, we could, um, avoid, but we're, we're caught up in a legislative cycle right now that, um, unfortunately keeps us in this reality each spring. So we'll start with just where we are in terms of our certificated staffing numbers. I think, um, the board is aware that the FY 26 budget reduced about 380 certificated positions. Um, to date, we've received, uh, 282 resignations, um, at the, for the end of the year. So we are able to offset a good portion of those through current vacancies that we have and, um, the resignations that we've received thus far. If those reductions have to be our permanent reality into next year. Um, we still have some upheaval that, um, is caused every year when we have to try to get folks in the right places for the following year. And so we've notified to date 188 staff members that they are displaced from their current positions for next year. So they're still teaching in those positions or working in those positions through the end of this year. But we don't have the FTE to keep them in that position at their current work location for next year. We do have 128 open positions, um, in, uh, in general ed. And so we'll be shortly here starting the process of trying to take those displaced individuals and find new positions for them for next year in those openings. Uh, I will note that that does not include, um, special ed positions. We currently have 68 vacancies as well in special ed. Um, but that is, uh, there are no displacements in that area. In fact, we're already, we've already moved to the external hiring phase in special ed, uh, because of the hard to fill nature of those positions. I also wanted to spend just a moment noting where we are with our, uh, principals association as well in those certificated positions. We did reduce, uh, 24 assistant principals across all funding sources. Um, there were 15 positions that were eliminated, um, at the elementary level. Uh, we have been using some carryover title one funds to fund those positions and we don't have uh, sustainable funds for next year to keep folks in those positions. We have two middle school assistant principals that were reduced based on, uh, declining enrollment through our metrics. And then of the seven high school reductions, three of those are based on declining enrollment and four of those were grant funded positions through the academies of Anchorage. So, um, we have had some resignations, uh, in our principal ranks as well. So we've been able to reabsorb 11 of those 24. Um, we currently still have 13 individuals who are displaced. And I wanted to note that because as we talk about our AEA staffing, typically when we haven't had homes for folks and we've had to displace in our principal ranks, we've allowed them to return to the classroom. So we will be actively trying to place those individuals in teaching positions for next year. If they still have their teaching cert, um, until we're able to recall them in, into openings, uh, in the principal ranks. So in terms of next steps, um, tomorrow is actually our displacement staffing process. We'll have folks from, um, the academic divisions, from talent management, um, looking at the information that we've collected from displaced individuals. Uh, we have displaced folks state their preferences of where they would like to work next year. If it's not the school where they're currently working. Uh, principals also have an opportunity to interview those candidates. And what we look for in our displaced staffing is those match, match situations where the individual has stated a school as their top preference and that principal is interested in picking them up because they have an opening there. So, um, once those are done, we'll hopefully still have some openings and, uh, we'll then actively start placing other displaced individuals who didn't get picked up in that match, match process in those openings. Um, as you saw on the previous slide, it is likely that after that displacement staffing process tomorrow, we will still have obligations to some displaced individuals, meaning we will not, there will not be an opening in the area in which they're qualified and certified. And so, um, we won't yet be able to name a position for them for next year. So by the end of the week, where that leaves us is after talent management kind of sorts through all of the movement that happens tomorrow, we'll be able to identify which areas of our staffing are open and which are frozen. Open means we're able to move into the next stage of our internal process, which is considering voluntary transfers. Those folks who are returning from extended leave, those who might be returning from another bargaining unit, like those displaced assistant principals, and then also moving into the external hire process. Uh, if an area is frozen, again, that means that we still have a displaced, we have an obligation to a displaced individual and we don't yet have an opening that we can place them based on their qualifications. And so that job area or content area will be frozen until we can find a home for them. So, um, April 29th, next week, we'll go through our general staffing process. That's where, uh, principals will work to pick up folks on voluntary transfers in areas that are open to hiring. We'll consider those return from leave, return from bargaining unit, and then move to external hiring and, and hope to start to hire some folks, um, in those harder to fill categories while there's still candidates available outside of the district. And then by the end of the month, um, as we head into early May, we'll have a pretty clear picture if we have any areas where we still have displacement obligations that could potentially lead to layoffs at the end of the year. So we have a statutory deadline, as I think you're aware, um, to notify any tenured staff, um, that are laid off by May 15th. And for folks who are not yet tenured, um, we have to make those notifications by the last student day on May 22nd. To dig a little bit more into displacements, um, most of our displaced, uh, folks were notified, um, on March 31st. Um, again, displacement means that that individual's existing position at their school is not budgeted at that school for the next year. Supervisors, in this case mostly principals, determine who is displaced by seniority at the work location. So at elementary, that's fairly straightforward when you're talking about classroom teachers. The least senior teacher at the school, regardless of what grade level they teach, is the one who is displaced if there's not a position available for them for the next year. At middle school and high school and our secondary schools, it's a little bit more complicated. The principal has some discretion to pick which departments to make those cuts from. And then it's the least senior in those departments that are displaced. Um, we then look for those open positions to place them. And at the top of this slide, we noted that most teachers were notified on March 31st. It did take us a little bit longer in some specialty areas to figure out, um, how to work those displacements because the FY 26 budget identified some cuts in some unique ways that we haven't, um, really experienced before. So it took a little longer for, um, you know, working across departments to figure out the best process for that in order to impact the fewest individuals overall. So if we go to the next slide, I'll kind of walk through some of those specialty areas. Uh, one was our nurse displacements. Um, they were notified on April 2nd if they were displaced from their current position. Um, I think you'll recall that the FY 26 budget as adopted, um, reduces 13 FTE from our nurses. Um, the intent there was to reduce 26 schools to halftime nurses, um, specifically schools with less than 300 students. Um, we did, uh, choose to absorb one of those cuts in our health services department, which meant that we had 24 schools that were affected by those reductions to a halftime nurse. When we looked at it strictly by enrollment numbers, um, with nursing specifically, we knew that probably wasn't the only criteria we could use because you could have a, a school with a relatively small student population, but with one or two students with very high medical needs. And so our health services department, um, developed a metric, um, or a matrix. They went through each of those smaller schools and they performed what they called an acuity assessment to make sure that that school could move to a, a halftime nurse. And while still not ideal, the medical needs at that school would, would allow for that. Um, member Lessons, I see you have a question.
Thanks.
Member.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, this is really hard work. Number one, um, how does the enrollment of new kindergartners for whom we don't know health needs and acuity complicate this? I don't know that we've talked about that or I haven't been partied the.
It is a.
To that conversation.
Yeah, it is a potentially complicating factor. It's one that health services has contemplated. Um, we know that we're, um, identifying schools and pairing schools based on the best information that we have at the moment. Um, we know that some families will move, you know, transition over the summer. We have new students coming in that we haven't yet met and, and may not be aware of their needs. And so every fall, um, you know, we have to sort of reassess what the situation is. There is the potential that we may have to shift some of these assignments next year based on, you know, a, a fall acuity assessment of student needs. Kirsten, anything you would add to that? I know you've been tracking closely with this process as well.
Yeah, um, we are able to do a little bit of work ahead of time by looking at our preschool needs that are already in our system. So that does give us a little bit of a heads up, but that doesn't account for all of it. But Marty summarized it pretty well. Um, there is a, the acuity matrix. Um, we will likely look at that again right after registration in August and make adjustments before students arrive on the first day.
One of the other things that we paused to do was see if there were any nurses who were at those 24 schools that were affected that would prefer to go from full-time to part-time or halftime to stay just at that school. And, um, when we surveyed and we did have six individuals who opted to do that, um, which meant we were affecting fewer schools than we originally thought in terms of pairing schools. But we did pair the remaining schools and post those positions. Um, those who did not reduce to point five were displaced from their position and we will work to place them in those newly paired openings tomorrow during displacement staffing.
Member Lessons.
Should additional funding be introduced and, and be passed by the legislature sometime? To what extent are plans in place to reverse, um, you know, I guess broadly, all of these displacements? Um, are the, tell us how things can be walked back from, from what you understand?
Yeah, I've been joking that if we got money today, we could play our Uno reverse card and we could put all of these folks right back in the positions where they're, they're currently at. And then go through our normal, you know, voluntary staffing process to see if people want to move to, you know, on a volunteer basis to different schools. Um, we can do that easily up through that general staffing meeting. Once we get to general ed staffing, areas that are open will start to layer on other complexities with, you know, the voluntary transfers, the return from leaves, external hires. It gets a little bit more co- complex and challenging just to simply hit the reset button. But we still have other levers that we can pull through the AEA contract to try to give people an option to move back to their original position if there is an opening when we get that, you know, that additional FTE.
Just to, to clarify, I used a phrase, general staffing. Is that the April 29th?
Correct.
So that's, that's a week from now. So you're saying, or what I think I'm hearing is that within the next week is really when we would need to hear something meaningful in order to walk back these displacements?
In its simplest form.
Play the Uno reverse card in its simplest form.
Correct. And then we, we've already started conversations with the association. We've had a lot of conversations internally. You know, when we get additional funding, how can we, to the greatest extent possible, put people back in the communities where they've been working?
One last thought. Can, can that be? One last thought. Can can that be concisely communicated to legislators in some sort of a follow up? I mean, there was an, would you, could you at least entertain that notion? That seems like an important timeline that they should be aware of, especially our Anchorage delegation.
Sure, I'm happy to have that message relayed. I'm looking at MJ so we can strategize on the best format, but it is an important milestone. I'd like them to know.
And we're committed to internally communicating as well at each step to make sure staff are aware that some of those things are being considered and, you know, our hope is still that we'll, we'll be able to unwind as many of these disruptions as possible.
Member Listens.
So I have a question in regards to the nurses. If we have to move toward halftime for some of these schools, are there placements for the nurses that want to work halftime at two different schools? Are the placements intentionally trying to be close to each other, to the schools that are closest to each other? And I'll throw out there that I, I learned a little while ago that King Tech, which I was shocked because of the population of students that come through there, is one of the schools that was on the list for for halftime. So at least, at the very least, if if some of these schools have to go to having a halftime nurse, can they be at least in as close as possible proximity to?
Yeah, and we, those pairings were done in partnership with, with the instructional division. So I'm going to let Kirsten respond to kind of the thoughtful intentionality that went behind how those were paired.
Sure. So to answer the question, we did look at proximity for sure. The idea being that if a nurse is at one school and the other school has a need that they'd be able to get there quickly, potentially. The other thing that we have is a buddy school system set up so that if that nurse isn't able to come over, there's another additional school that could help out if there's a question or a need or an emergency, if you will. So we did look at schools regionally so that we don't have people driving from South Anchorage to Eagle River, as an example. And we, we actually did make some accommodations for Girdwood as well because it's a far drive. In terms of King Tech and some of our secondary schools that were paired, part of what the acuity matrix looked like in terms of an assessment is how many visits each nurse gets, how many medications are serviced through that office, how many complex medical needs of students in that building. And, and so it was done in a very data based fashion. And for King Tech in particular, there, there isn't a high rate of visits, office visits, if you will, through, through their office. If that gives some context to that placement.
Member Listens.
Is there, is there liability of not having a nurse? I mean, we've gone through the budget conversation, but if there's not a nurse on hand to, I don't know, properly log things, give the correct medication. Are we increasing our liability? I mean, we don't want bad things to happen to kids, number one. But we also don't want bad things to happen to the district because a person who is certified and, and is the right person on the job for that task is not present. So I'm trying to, I said, are there things that nurses are doing in our schools that if they're not on site would, could not be done by another person legally?
So I could start and then others could weigh in. So we are covered as educators and general public under good Samaritan laws for medical treatment. So if there is an emergency and you're rendering aid, it doesn't matter if you're a teacher in a classroom or someone walking down the street. If, if you potentially didn't aid that person correctly, you're, you're covered for liability under good Samaritan laws. That said, we do have a system for administering medications, which is a big function of nurses in our buildings. And we have a backup system in place for how that's done within our buildings already. So we're relying on that. That said, I, I won't discount that our nurses do a lot of things outside of those really emergent medical needs and requirements and, and they fill a lot of gaps in a lot of other ways. So, so their services will be missed regardless of if they're seeing an official, you know, student for a seizure, as an example, or administering a medication. There's a lot of other little things that they do that can't be accounted for, so it will be a loss, no doubt.
All right. Yeah, two more slides. I wanted to just talk about librarians, which mirrors in many ways the same process that we, we used with the nurse displacements. They were notified on April 10th. There were 20 schools, 26 schools affected by a reduction to a half time librarian. We also went through the same process of surveying those individuals at the affected schools to see if there were any who were interested in, voluntarily reducing to halftime to stay at just one school. We had a couple who showed some initial interest, but nobody ultimately decided to voluntarily go that direction. So we paired the schools using a lot of the same, you know, processes that, that Kirsten outlined and displaced those librarians from the full time positions at those 26 impacted schools. They've had an opportunity to interview and they'll be hopefully placed through that displacement staffing process tomorrow on April 23rd. And then the last kind of specialty category we had is our elementary specialists. They were notified a week ago, Monday on April 14th. We talked about elementary specialists, that's art, health, music and PE teachers. And I think you're probably already aware that specialists often are shared across multiple schools already in our current model. With the plus four PTR increase in the FY26 budget, we reduced an additional 54 specialist FTE. And when elementary ed senior directors sat down to try to figure out how to thoughtfully pair schools, what they found is that proved very difficult to create those pairings with those reductions in mind. It was just, they were fractionalizing FTE to the point in splitting folks across so many schools that it became highly inefficient because of the time that would be lost in transition. And so they, at one point realized there was not, at this point, a good workable model and we didn't have the time to sort of pivot to, you know, how would we, in this current FTE situation, build that model out? So we decided to wait to pair positions until we know kind of the outcome of the legislative process and what funding may be coming. We knew we still had to displace some teachers, so we differed a little bit from the other processes we used and we looked at how many positions we needed to reduce in each of those specialty areas and did it strictly off of seniority and just notified the least senior in each of those areas who needed to be displaced. The folks who are not displaced still don't know their current work locations for next year, but as soon as we know our funding, we'll be able to work on that model, thoughtfully pair those schools in an efficient way. And they'll receive their teaching assignments later, once those pairings are complete.
I have a question from President Holloman.
Oh, thank you. And it's not really a question and it's not really directed at the administration, but to my fellow board members. That when you begin to put people in part time positions in schools, there's no way they really integrate in the same way they do when they're full time. And when you're full time, and for the people that are trying to do their job with a certain level of excellence, you do more things and you, you do things because you want to create a program. You want, you want your existence to really matter. And, and that's a standard that, that we've worked at for a very long time. When we start making people part time and splitting them between buildings, they show up and do what they need to do because that's really all the time they have. And they, there's just not the ability to be there before and after. I appreciate what the administration's doing in terms of trying to make things work with the resources they have. I do think it's important that all of us remember that we're really dismantling the Anchorage School District at this point. We really are changing things to where it's, it's going to be more and more difficult for teachers to pursue a passion of excellence. If I sound a little bit depressed about it, I am, but I just wanted to put that in there. There's a bigger effect than we can measure, I think.
Thank you, President Holloman. Let's see any other questions? We have a bit more information? Or we were officially ready for questions now?
That's everything we had to present formally. So we are ready for questions.
All right. Board members, do we have other questions for the team on the topic discussed today?
Mr. Chair.
Member Bellamy.
Thank you. Going back to, I don't know the number of the slide, but when we were looking at the governor's new bill, is that 560 a statutory increase or a one time money?
I believe that would be statutory.
Okay, thank you. And then clarifying the case six. So the way I read it is that the governor wants to reward districts for kids who can read. I, I don't, I don't read this as him wanting to improve reading. But I hope I'm wrong because that infuriates me. So I guess we'll have to wait for more clarity. But when I read it, when I read it, the bill, it looked to me that the governor is giving $450 per student who, who is read, who is performing, who is proficient in reading. I hope I'm wrong. So I guess we, we, we will need more information on that. Anyway, thank you, guys. A great presentation. And thank you for answering all the millions of questions that's come up. I know within, forever, but especially in these last few days. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Through the chair, Member Bellamy, great point about the reading proficiency bonuses. I'm looking at it right now and for those following along, it's page nine of the bill. I'm looking at the section, section 16 specifically on reading proficiency. I just wanted to add to what Member Bellamy shared. As she mentioned, we would receive a $450 increase for students performing at grade level reading proficiency. But I did want to also flag that you can also receive it if at the end of the year, you've demonstrated quote unquote improvement on the statewide screening tool or a standards based assessment in language arts approved by the department. So I do think that there is a lot there that we need to ask more questions about. The reasons why a lot of districts did not support this initially is because they don't have enough students that are reading at proficient, at proficient levels to generate enough dollars to actually intervene and to move the needle. So that is a true concern, but it is my sincere hope that if this bill or a version like this moved forward, that districts would have the flexibility to direct these dollars towards students who need extra support. I, I do have issues with the particular ways that this, this intervention is framed, but I do think there's something positive that can come of it. So I just wanted to put that out.
Okay. I certainly do hope so. And my final question had to do with the resignations. Were, Marty, were those resignations? You know, people didn't, like, did we have librarians that, or nurses that resigned from that position only to apply for, and then came back and applied for another position, like a teaching position? Did we have any of that going on?
No, those resignations are folks who
Who are leaving education period.
Aren't leaving the district for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
We give them the opportunity to participate in an exit survey. And so we will, at a later date, have some data on, you know, what they indicated they're going to do next. But this is not too far off the number
Number, yeah.
that we've seen, you know, over the last three, five years.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Member Listens, do I see a question?
Yeah, I was, I mean, I was going to, I don't know, raise a question, a remark about, you know, how, how can you budget for a grant? We are budgeting for FY26. We don't know what students will be proficient in FY26 or what, which students will demonstrate growth in FY26. So that seems very challenging from a budgeting standpoint. You know, how, how you're going to apply an estimated, you know, dollar figure that you might receive. So it seems like, I don't know, it just seems very perplexing to me. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Mr. Rattler, before we answer, I'm just going to ask if there's any objection to increasing the length of our work session by 15 minutes, no more than 15 minutes. Not seeing any. Mr. Rattler, if you could answer the question now.
No, that's a good question. That's one that we had and we're going to flag for the, our partners in the legislature as well as, you know, what testing year to tie to which funding year. So are they going to look red draft back with our testing for 24 to, or for 25 to fund 26? And when would we actually perceive that? If it's based on AK star, we may not get that till a little bit further into the year. But really, we have, we have quite a few questions around that, but hopefully we get some clarity on what that'll mean for us.
And that's a great segue. I did want to inform the board that our team has reviewed the governor's bill. We've created initial analyses of the pieces of the proposal. But along with that analysis was also more than a dozen questions. And one of my top priorities is to get clarification, either from the governor's office through deed and/or our education committees who can start asking these questions because that is just the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot that we need to understand and my top priority is to find a path forward to collaborate and to get something across the finish line and getting these questions answered is key to that.
Member Listens.
Yeah, thanks. And pivoting to the elementary specialist sort of portion of the presentation, I've shared with the administration and, and, you know, a couple of board members, President Holloman. I, this gave me, I don't know, I thought I had seen it all and then I woke up Tuesday morning a week ago to, to news that elementary specialists had, were being displaced. And I was just racking my brain for where in the budget process, where did I miss this? Where did we have this conversation? Unlike last year, when we talked about, you know, potentially transforming health and art education, we, we were specifically talking about specialists. In previous years, we've specifically talked about health specialists. I mean, they were cut from the budget and then COVID funds brought them, I'm sorry, yeah, the health specialist, COVID funds brought them back. This is four or five years ago now. And this just wasn't on my radar, even though I think I also understood at some level, because I've, we've had budget conversations, that PTR involves more than a classroom teacher. But I truly did think that we were talking about just, and I use just in, you know, with a big asterisk, just really large class sizes in elementary schools, not really large class sizes. And pulling away the people for whom we talked to. And any elementary kid, specials are the best part of their day. The PE teachers are how we ensure alignment with state statute about a certain amount of time with, you know, physical activity. Health teachers deliver information that is in state statute. The specialists also ensure that our classroom teachers receive prep time, which is in their contract. Specialists are also, and especially in, you know, I think in all schools, but in the non-title schools where you don't have the additional staffing provided, in some cases by title funds, they're on hand and they're helping ensure alignment with the Alaska READS Act, right? By having small or smallish groups where you can focus on students who need that dialed in level of instruction. And so, you know, and then there's also just like the layer of longitudinal support that, you know, the PE or the music or the art teacher offers. They know a child in kindergarten and they know, they know that same child, you know, when they are in fifth grade and they know their brothers and their sisters and they have that whole, that whole person understood. And that just, it kind of did me in last week. I don't know if you can just share about how, how we missed this in our budget process?
Sure. So the way we did it this year is, or at least for the budget preparations, well, we've always done it. It's always tied to the PTR metric. If you have fewer teachers, you need less specialists to cover those planning time. What we found this year was more is when we went to do that displacement process, we're like, oh, we can't, we have to fragment these specialists so much, it's hard to get them to cover the building. So it was more, I think the timing issue more than anything that flagged it as a, as a difference than a normal process where in a normal year, when we're going and doing all our displacements, it's all done at the same time. But in this year, since we're having trouble figuring out what those placements might be, we still are, I believe. That's kind of why it's felt like a separate process. And also, you know, when we were talking about some of the reporting that we did this year, say, here's how many classrooms this school would lose. The specialists aren't included in there because it's not necessarily losing a direct classroom. It's just that the planning time component of It's just that the planning time component of it. So I think that was the difference between previous years, but the math has always been the same as far as the PTR calculations.
Well, I guess I'm going to file an early request, assuming that the math is not going to be in our favor for budgeting for FY27. It seems that we need to make sure we have all of these conversations out ahead of time. Because I project that we will be having more of these consequences in about, what is this, April? You know, by December of next year, or by December of this year.
Member Lessons, just to kind of give you a little bit more on that, we, there's a process we have to go through in order to get to the specialists because we need to figure out where we need to have people, especially with the, like you said, the planning time and that kind of stuff as well. So this became very intricate and it, our, my staff just really dove in. They sequestered for over a week just trying to figure this out. And that's how we ended up coming to this because it's just at a point where it's broken.
Not seeing any other questions and we're still decent time. So with that said, I just want to circle back to something made or a request made earlier to again connect maybe through district administration with our Anchorage delegation specifically to provide them the most up to date context we have, which is that there's still time to act in support of our students. The time is still possible and available for them to utilize to pass a bill that would provide certainty for us this year and the future. I also think, you know, it's worth noting that, you know, we had 33 votes in favor of overriding HB 69 today. We were, we're close. There are still votes in the Anchorage delegation that I think could be swayed with a better understanding of our support for reasonable policies that also supports students. And I'm thinking of things that we currently know that we support. Increased transportation funding, a return to a defined benefit retirement plan, which is part of the governor's teacher retention and recruitment playbook. We've implemented policies that effectively implement a cell phone ban and a financial literacy curriculum, which has been introduced to separate bills. And so many of our priorities and things that we're implementing align with a common sense, a multifaceted education bill. And so I'm hoping that President Holloman, myself, and then district administration can collaborate on a document that maybe can be made available to all board members who wish to sign and then sent to the legislature, just making clear our priorities for policy as the legislature looks for something that can get us 40 votes. With that said, and not seeing any other questions or objections, I'm going to ask that the, for a motion to adjourn our work session into executive session for the purpose of negotiations, legal updates and contracts.
Second.
Made by Member Wilson, seconded by Member Lessons, seeing no objection. We are in executive session as of, well, we're adjourned to executive session 508. Thank you, everyone.